Good evening and welcome to the third and final meeting tonight. My name is Dennis Buckley, Mayor of the City of Beach Grove. At this time, we will convene our common council meeting for Monday, October the 7th, 2013. And in lieu of a roll call, I will ask each councillor to identify themselves, beginning on my left.
Dave Mobley, City Councilman-at-Large.
John Jennings, District 4.
Dave Harrison, District 5.
Dan McMillan, Clerk of Treasure.
Craig Wiley, City Attorney.
Anthony Davidson, District 3.
Ed Bell, District 2.
Mary Hughes Stewart, District 1.
Kathy Coats, Council at Large.
Thank you. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance-
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice-
Thank you, council, and welcome. Special presentations. This time, I'll call our operations chief, Jim Pierce, up for a Fire Department proclamation. Jim? Counsel, this is Fire Prevention Week, October the 6th, 2013, to October the 12th. And the theme this year is "Prevent Kitchen Fires." Whereas the City of Beach Grove is committed to ensuring the safety and security of all those living in and around our city, and whereas fire is a serious public safety concern, both locally and nationally, and homes are the locations where people are at greatest risk from fire, and whereas two out of every five home fires start in the kitchen, and whereas home fires killed more than 2,500 people in the United States in 2011, according to the latest research from the National Fire Protection Association, and then the fire departments in the United States respond to more than 370,000 home fires per year. Whereas cooking is the leading cause of home fires in the United States, where fire departments responded to more than 156,000 kitchen fires between 2008 and 2012, and whereas residents should stay in the kitchen when frying food on the stove top, keep a three-foot kid-free zone around cooking areas, and keep anything that can catch on fire away from stove tops. Whereas the 2013 Fire Prevention Week theme, "Prevent Cooking Fires," effectively serves to remind us to stay alert and use caution when cooking to reduce the risk of kitchen fires. Therefore, I, Dennis B. Buckley, Mayor of the City of Beach Grove, do hereby proclaim October the 6th, 2013, as Fire Prevention Week throughout the City of Beach Grove, and urge all the citizens of Beach Grove to use caution and stay alert to reduce the risk of kitchen fires and to support the many public safety activities and the efforts of the Beach Grove Fire and Emergency Services. So Jim, on behalf of the council and the city, this is presented to you.
Very much, Mayor. Thank you, council. This is a great honor. Every year, we celebrate or promote Fire Prevention Week. Each year, there's a new theme that's set forth by the National Fire Protection Agency. Again, this year is Prevention of Kitchen Fires. So we appreciate the recognition that the council has given us and the support, as always, and be safe out there. Check your smoke detectors and be careful when you're cooking in the kitchen. Thank you.
Thanks, Jim. Thank you, Jim. We'll move, real quick, counsel, to the Franciscan Alliance zoning petition. You should have in your packet, that was delivered to you, a copy of the petition. And very, very briefly, Franciscan Alliance has retained Bose McKinnon-Evans to work on their behalf to change the zoning of the property located at 1600 Albany from special use to commercial zoning. So what I need to ask you this evening is if you, as a council body, would like to hear the petition from Franciscan Alliance. And then if you do, then I will instruct the clerk and the city attorney to work with Bose McKinnon to make that presentation happen, probably sometime in December or early next year, due to advertising. So you should have read it, and I'll ask for a motion to hear the petition on behalf of Franciscan Alliance at a later meeting.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second that motion.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the same sign. All right, thank you very much. Counsel, you've been presented the printed copy of the minutes of the previous meeting dated September the 16th. Floor is open for comments, questions, or corrections.
I have read and understand everything in the Monday, September 16th, 2013, meeting minutes. I motion we accept as written, as opposed to reading all nine pages.
I second that.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the same sign. Petitions and comments by citizens are legal to permit?
Yes. Three people have asked to speak tonight. Laura, why don't you go first, since you signed up first? Will you please state your name and your address?
Yeah, my name is Laura Cammer. I live at-
Laura.
Cammer.
Thank you.
I live at 508 East Main. I was here last month about the intersection of Fifth and Albany. I would like to know first why nothing has been done. We have not had a police presence since the Fall Festival. There has not been an officer that has actually stopped. I know two of you have actually been down there to see how bad it really is. I would appreciate it if you shared with those that didn't see. And I know a few of you saw my video, where I have an officer that was posted there, and cars continued to roll right through the stop sign, and were not issued tickets. I mean, it's dangerous. Nothing has been done. This has been going on for two months, since I brought it to the mayor's attention. I mean, I'd really like to know what is going to happen. Is anybody going to do anything about it? We have to have something. There are a lot of kids at that bus stop. We've got to do something so that they're safe, because they're not right now. Because when the road is back open after they finish everything, we all have to cross that street to get to that bus, putting all eight of those kids and all of us parents at risk of being hit. Because it doesn't matter if the bus is there or not, they still run the stop sign. Or they'll stop at the stop sign, and they'll run the bus arm, either way. I mean, I would really like to know what is going to be done, what's anybody going to do? I mean, these are Beach Grove kids, these are Beach Grove students. Two months of asking for help to make this safe is a little sad. I mean, because I know that you guys have been down there, I know you guys have seen my video. I know you guys know that this is a problem, but nobody is acting on it. So I'd really appreciate it if somebody could fill me in as to what the game plan is, because there's got to be something done. Because if a kid gets hurt, it's going to devastate a lot of people. And it's just, it's a ticking time bomb right now. I mean, it really is. So I'd really like to hear from you guys. I would love to hear from you guys as to what's going to happen, because I have a lot of parents down there depending on me to get their answers, because they are too scared to go against people in our little government. So I am the speaking force for all of them. I really need to know, I need to take it back to them and tell them, hey, our kids are going to be safe, because the city's actually going to do something. But here, we fought this for two months, and nothing has happened. So please, anybody?
I agree with the young lady, it's quite a problem.
It is.
We have a problem with our fire department and our police department doing the same thing.
Yes.
I've got pictures, dates, and times where I've seen our policeman pull up to a stop sign and not come to a complete stop. Earlier this evening, I was going down church from the Ninth Street, a fire truck approached, slowed down, and ran the stop sign. So I think we really need to get something done on this.
Considering this, I do have video. I did not bring anything with me tonight, but I do have video of an ambulance. I don't know if it's the same ambulance, but an ambulance running that stop sign twice, two days in a row, same timeframe. It's always 2:45 to 3:15, that's all I'm down there in the afternoons. I mean, it's high traffic, there's a lot of cars there. Even after Main Street opened back up, there's still a lot of traffic. So I mean, I just, what help can you guys give us?
All right, I have a question, because you've seen two people there. I know I've been there, and you probably didn't see me, because I made sure of that.
You may not have gotten out of the car or something, yeah.
I just wanted to look and see what was going on for myself.
Yeah.
And I have to admit that the mornings are less-
Yeah, there's less traffic, yes, I agree. Yes.
Now, whatever the reason for that and the meaning behind that, I don't know.
I don't either.
But I did witness a couple occurrences. However, and I don't mean this in any way negative, my question is, what more can we do? Because there have been times when there are police officers there, there are times when police officers are not there. So I know that they're patrolling when they can and doing what they do.
Right.
But we don't have enough officers to sit at every bus stop.
And I understand that, and I've acknowledged that.
And I know that.
I get that.
I do ask for help, but what would be-
I mean-
Positive things for, I mean, what direction?
It needs to be brought to people's attention, because there's a lot of times that people will roll through it, they don't even pause, because I think they just don't see it. If there was a crosswalk or a flashing light there, because I highly doubt there's going to be a full stop sign there, because it's so close to Emerson, but even a flashing light, or a crosswalk, or both, for that matter, something has to happen. I mean, because it's not catching people's attention enough to actually make them stop, or even hesitate sometimes. I mean, we've seen people fly down there, and they're not even doing the speed limit, but they just, they don't stop. So I mean, any help.
Okay.
You know, a crossing guard, anything. At this point, it doesn't matter. Anything that we can get to help, so that it's brought to people's attention, that it's a stop, it is an actual four-way stop. It is not a yield. It exists, it's there, but there's a lot of people that pretend that it's not there at all.
But you understand that the same people that do that are going to do that, whether it's a flashing light or a crosswalk?
Which is why I was trying to get the officers out there to actually issue tickets, because if those same people are doing it every day, and they're issued one ticket, they're going to stop and think. However, in the times that I've been out there, and I've actually seen an officer posted, and they actually do go and ticket someone, that's only happened twice. Whether or not tickets were even issued, I have no idea. But I know only two people were pulled over, and we have not had an officer out there, even for two seconds since the Fall Festival. We had no police presence whatsoever. I mean, they were able to find the time to go before, but then the Fall Festival happened, and I mean, we expected there to not really be anybody during that time, but we expected we would see them sporadically after. Not a single officer has been out there during the bus time, not in the mornings and not in the afternoons. You know, I mean, if they would issue the tickets to those people that do it every single day, regardless of what's there, those people will eventually stop. And that's, I mean, and that would probably, those tickets would help fund whatever we would need to get done. I mean, I'm sure of that. But I was told that all they actually see is $5 out of every ticket issued. That was from Chief Schwartz.
I don't know the answer to that.
Right. I don't either, but, I mean, even $5, eventually, it's going to build up. They sit out there for, you know, enough days, that's eventually going to build up.
Okay.
And they'll have the money.
I don't want to use up all your time, so-
Right.
We hear you.
I hope.
We do hear you.
All right.
Whether or not we can make an immediate solution.
I'd like to comment on her.
We're going to have to further look into that.
Please do.
Correct, Craig? And work with the Public Safety Committee, is that something we could do? Just, I mean, I don't know. I don't, I can't say, but at least we know there's an issue.
I would just like to say, Laura came to me one afternoon, and I told her I would come to that bus stop that afternoon, which I did do, and I was there five minutes, and I seen nine vehicles that, in my opinion, should have got a ticket in the first five minutes. I contacted Councilman Mobley and Councilman Bell. They came the next day, and I went down there with them again, and they both seen the same thing that she's saying. So I just-
So we have to issue-
Yeah, I just think that someone needs to listen to her.
Well, I'm listening. I just don't know how to fix the issue. So I'm asking now, what's our next step, and where can we go with this?
Thank you, Laura.
Thank you.
Thank you, Laura.
Okay, Suzie, you're next.
Can I wait until you get to those things that I want to speak to?
I think we're going to handle public comments now, okay?
And I've got some by email and by people that have contacted me, too. Yeah, put them in. Okay. But the ones that took time, or write it.
Which one do you want me to speak to first, Craig?
Where are you, please?
Well, let's start with the salary ordinance and the clerk with the increase in pay. I want to state that I disagree with that. No one else in the city is getting an increase in pay, and regardless of whether Judge Wells feels like it's in his budget or not, I'm just stating, I don't approve of it. I don't think it's right when anyone else in the city is not getting a pay raise for her to be the only one to get one. Express that to Councilor Coats, correct?
Yes, she did.
And Councilor Coats and I discussed the fact that Mrs. Lockwood, they keep saying, got a pay raise last year. The truth of the matter is, and as difficult as it is for me to defend this, believe me, she didn't get a pay raise, unlike Mrs. Johnson, or whoever the court clerk is, that would get a pay raise. The difference with her was, when you guys keep saying she got a pay raise, that girl didn't see a dollar more, other than her longevity, from December 31st to January 1st of the next year. There was no pay raise. The position got a pay raise, she personally received no pay raise. There wasn't any. But with the pay raise for the clerk, that is an actual raise in pay. So I want everyone to understand the difference between the two. With that being said, may I approach?
Absolutely, yes.
Thank you, Suzie.
And I called today to speak to the State Board of Accounts, because I'm not going to say who I've been saying it to, but I've been telling someone, I think that what you guys were about to do with changing the judge's salary is illegal against state statute. And since you guys all went ahead and passed it anyway at your last meeting, I decided today to call State Board of Accounts. And I talked to Mr. Todd Austin, who is a supervisor there, and I also told him I would be using his name this evening, so I needed him to be correct in any information he gave me. And I explained to him that you guys weren't intending on excluding the judge from the education incentive pay. And he said, his answer was, well, maybe it's just a one-time thing that they gave him last year, because he's going to school. No, no, but that's not what it is. So he said, tell me a little bit about it. So I explained to him that even if you're an employee that took college credits, say you took a dance class in college eight years ago, you still get paid for it, or 20 years ago, you still get paid for it today. And he said, well, I've never heard of a municipality that does that. And I said, well, Beach Grove does. So he said, well, after I explained to him what it is, and he pulled the statute up and looked at it, and he said, hold on, let me go get some advice. I'm assuming he got legal advice. He came back, and he said, you're absolutely correct, they cannot lower the judge's pay. It does not state salary if you read statute. It states compensation. What it says is, used in this section, compensation means the total of all money paid to an elected city officer for performing duties as a city officer, regardless of the source of funds from which the money is paid. It also goes on to state, the compensation of an elected city officer may not be changed in the year for which it is fixed, nor may it be reduced below the amount fixed for the previous year. So legally, if you guys vote to reduce his salary in that salary ordinance, you are breaking state statute. And you cannot raise the budget, because that's against state statute. You can lower it, but after the first reading, you cannot raise it. So, point being, Mrs. Clerk's, or Mrs. Johnson, the clerk of the court, her pay raise would not be funded in that budget anyway, if you decide to proceed forward with that. So I just wanted to let you all know that, that it will be against state statute if you do that. Okay? Next thing is Joe Griffin and the RDC. And I understand there is a resolution to remove Joe Griffin from the RDC, have no idea of why. Listened to the meeting that he was at, the RDC meeting that was September the 25th, listened to it two or three times, in fact, was quite shocked that it was his removal they were requesting, when I heard one of the members, and I couldn't tell you which one, because I was not at the meeting, but heard some of the statements that were made. I don't mean to offend anybody in the audience, but, for example, one member in particular, D I C K U around, D I C K with you, S C R E W with you, Y the H E L L, H E L L with us, H E L L with it, and don't be I T C H. But it's not him that they're asking to remove, it's Joe Griffin, who specifically tells them in the meeting, if you sit and listen to it, and again, here we are with state statute. You have to have two appraisals before you can sell that property. I asked Joe Griffin about it. He came to my home, very inquisitive, I was very inquisitive with him. He said, you're going to have to put in a public information request, you want that information, so I did so. I asked for, the city has a program that is called Keystone, that is their accounting system. If the city writes a check, it's in Keystone. No checks were written for the second appraisal. Can't find the second appraisal, nobody can. Me and a former board member spent two hours going through the last two and a half years of minutes, can't find where any other appraisal was ever done. And he specifically tried to tell them in that meeting, I want you to understand, if you vote to go through with this, with this NRP or NPR, whatever they're called, it's against state statute. And they basically are voting to move forward with it anyway, so I wanted you guys all to know that also. And as far as Joe Griffin goes, I don't see any difference in Joe Griffin today than when all seven of you, each and every one of you, voted unanimously to put him on that RDC. And Joe Griffin has been to, going to RDC meetings, probably knows that RDC better than any one of us here. He's been doing it for years, so it's nothing new to him. And yes, he's probably a pain, because he researches things like I did. You know, he goes to state statute, he looks at the law, because we all figure that there's a reason why our legislators are up there making these laws, and it's not for us to sit down here in Beach Grove and break them. So I just want everybody to know, I'm in complete support of Joe Griffin staying on the RDC. I don't know who the member is that used the language they did, the inappropriate language that they did at that last RDC meeting, but I would urge every one of you councillors to listen to that meeting and listen to that language, because it was inappropriate. And if a resolution is brought forth to remove a member, I, as a citizen, would like to see that member removed. Thank you.
Thank you, Suzie.
Suzie.
Yep. Chris? Good evening.
Thank you, guys.
Please state your name.
Chris Duffer, 1226 Alton Street, Beach Grove, Indiana. I, too, would like to speak about Resolution Number 12 concerning Joe Griffin. Joe and the council, and Joe and the RDC have a long history. Everyone knows Joe, he's come up here and spoke many times on many things. And if nothing, Joe is very, very passionate about Beach Grove and about the things he agrees with. And Joe and I have not agreed on several things in the past, but there are things that we do agree on. I listened to that meeting also, and Mrs. McMillan is a difficult case to follow, because she pretty much stole most of my thunder, but he is right. I mean, there is not a second appraisal. They cannot prove that the ads were, that the publication for the ads could not be found, and yet, the council, not Joe, but the council, the commission, voted to go ahead with that, and go ahead with this project. You know, that might come back to bite the city, if in fact, these things are not done legally, and that it's pushed through illegally. And I don't think it's right that they should try to remove Joe, because he's the lone voice in the wilderness, saying, wait a minute, we have to do this legally. You know, the city has gone through some of that in the past, and I'm sure every one of you up there remember a time when there was another mayor in here who decided he didn't want to hear what Frankie Maschery had to say, and pretty much shut him down. Well, that got a very negative blog started in this city, and that's not been a nice spot for the city, that it's provided as a black eye. And I would challenge the councillors tonight to think about trying to shut someone down from speaking their mind, or holding the city to what is legal, by removing them from the board. I don't think that's the way you should do it. I think that I would challenge each of you to listen to that meeting, because Mrs. McMillan is right, the language was atrocious, and Joe was trying to prove his point of things need to be done in a legal fashion, and he's of the opinion that they are not. And I've never known Joe to be wrong on the RDC, he knows that stuff forward and backwards. He is a man of good character, and I would ask the council tonight to seriously consider that resolution to remove him. I think that he should stay on there, and that the council themselves should look into the accusations he's made concerning that deal. Anybody have any questions, or anything? Thank you.
Thank you, Chris. Thank you, Chris.
Can I say one more thing I did fail to do, and I have it here, if you guys want it? I have a letter from Heather James with ICN or attorneys, I'm sure we're all familiar with them. She couldn't care less about the Beach Grove politics if it goes on in Beach Grove. But in her letter, she states, again, my, this is just the bottom of it, I don't want to keep talking, again, my recommendation would be to find proof that all of the steps on the timetable I provided were taken, or go through those steps now prior to transferring any property. And above that, she is telling them not to move forward, but that if help, the steps are completed.
Suzie, can we get that for the record? Include that in the minutes?
Absolutely.
Please.
We've got those comments at that point, Commissioner.
That's all right, I can take care of that.
All right, thank you. And the clerk would like to read an email into the record as well.
This record is from former councillor Bud Timlin, and it just states, when I first heard Joe Griffin was appointed to the RDC, I thought, what a great choice. Here's a guy who brought with him a great knowledge of past projects and redevelopment matters in general. Joe had already invested a good deal of his own time educating himself and sharing what he learned with others. He does his homework, and is not one to just accept what he is told. As a member of the RDC, he has served with integrity, solicited input from the council and the community, worked to develop partnerships, and brought in experts in many areas to assist the commission in establishing a plan for the future, and to ensure they work within the law and in the best interests of the community. It's not clear what your differences are, but when this matter is resolved, I hope you can all say you made your decision with the same openness and diligence exhibited by Joe as a member of the RDC. Bud Timlin. And I would also like to say, this weekend, I had numerous emails, phone calls, homework, I even had one of the council members call and say they supported Joe. I never got one call in opposition to Joe Griffin. One thing that I got out of two- I think this person that asked this question should get an answer to that. Who is accusing Joe, and what are they accusing him of? But I got comments from people as far as, "Save Joe, we need Joe on the RDC." What's going on with this city? So, but anyway, I wanted to let you know I had numerous comments and calls on that.
All right. That concludes the petitions and comments. We'll move to reports from committees, boards, and commissions. Greenscape. Tim, I asked it to be brief, please.
Will do.
You got it.
Minutes from our last meeting include, tomorrow night is our Arbor Day tree planting ceremony. Chris Kaufman from the high school's FFA program, and I assume some of the FFA students will be there, will be planting a beech tree at the high school, 6 o'clock. One of the sisters from the Benedictine Center will be there to bless the tree. Perennials have been planted along Main Street, they look really nice. The trees will be planted later this month. The Greenscape Commission plans on inspecting those trees after they're planted. We will begin working on Tree City recertification process at our next two meetings. We are hoping we can receive a growth award again. We received one about two years ago. So far, it looks like we have escaped the emerald ash borers for this year. We've not found any confirmed signs of the emerald ash borers in our street trees or our park trees, but we have a couple in Sarah Bolton Park that we're gonna keep a close eye on. And at this point in time now, we'll just have to wait until, and see what happens in the spring. I was hoping Tom Hannan would be here tonight. He's planning on planting three beech trees and four hybrid maple trees in Sarah Bolton Park along the creek. Tom thinks we should give these hybrid maples a try, as they could turn out to be good trees for the future. Our next meeting is the 21st at Horner Park Community Center at 6 o'clock. The public is invited to attend. And that is all I have for you. Do you have any questions for me?
Approximately, how many trees are you planting along Main Street?
Oh, I was hoping you wouldn't ask me that.
Just 10, 30, 50?
Closer to 30.
Okay.
We pared it down quite a bit from what the original plans were. We thought there were way too many trees. So I don't think it'll be any more than 30. But now, don't hold me to that, I could...
One more question, Tim.
Tim, if you do find an emerald ash borer in the city, what is your plan on that?
Well, what we're supposed to do is to call the urban, the Indiana Urban Forestry Council, and what they'll probably do is instruct us to remove the tree. There's nothing you can do. You know, if it's there, you can't, you can't get rid of them, really.
So we get that we're on a private property, with the homeowner being responsible for that cost?
Absolutely. Yeah. Yeah, we just, we're just, the Greenscape Commission just advises on park trees and street trees.
I'll cut it down. I'll cut it down. There you go.
Well, you know, we've been lucky, you know, we got them up in Carmel, but we've looked, and we haven't seen, like I say, we've got a couple that look suspicious, but we haven't confirmed it as of yet. Yes, ma'am.
If they're there, like, will the freeze or the winter, do they lie dormant and then come back?
They do go dormant, but then they'll be back in the spring, yeah.
But we're not out of the woods?
No, not yet. Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you, Tim.
Thank you.
Thanks, Tim.
RDC.
How you doing? Joe Griffin, currently the president of the RDC.
Good evening, Joe.
How y'all doing?
Excellent.
As the topic, I passed out two CDs to everybody. I couldn't catch up to Mary, she's tough to get ahold of, but I passed out CDs to everybody else on the council about the NRP and what went on there. I put on there several meetings also to go along with those. Dan McMillan and myself, we turned every tree, every leaf, we did everything that we could bounce around, we did all the fine we could get. You probably have about 85% of what we could find out there, and with the law stating everything else. I'm not gonna go into great, great detail, we'll just hit some overflows that's been done here. As stated, can't find a second appraisal, as required by state law. Legal representation, that's a big question there. According to the minutes, the minutes state that we used the NRP, but according to one commissioner who was looking in this situation, it was Jackson Lewis that did that, is what this one commissioner has to say because of the bill that was sent to the mayor. And on there, it states that, "Review contract with RDC regarding land donation," and it was sent to the mayor. So that is a questionable thing. Do you believe the minutes, or do you believe the invoice that was sent to the mayor that has the RDC review land agreement? You want to comment on that, Craig?
I don't... Tell me more. I remember looking at the contract, but it doesn't have to do with an appraisal.
I don't know. Reviewing the land agreement, because that was one of the things that came up, who we legally used in order to oversee the NRP deal. And one of the things that you build for was reviewed contract with RDC on land donation deal. That's one of your itemized things on here.
Okay. Your point?
So that's one of the things that's out there questioning to be put. Another question was, how come legal counsel wasn't there? As you heard...
Hold on a second. I want to make sure, are you questioning my integrity on something?
No, I'm not. I'm just, I'm just saying, that is the points that were brought up, if you listened to the minutes in there.
Okay. Well, let me give you a little history. When I talked to Stephanie, when this administration took over, I told Stephanie, "I'm not a real estate lawyer. I can look at contracts, and I can give you general legal advice." And I urged her, and if you look at the email correspondence that you asked for, it's in there. I asked Stephanie, "You need to secure legal counsel knows these issues. I can help you out on general matters, but not on this." And they sat on it, until Heather got involved.
I assigned another commissioner to look into this, and this is what this commissioner's reporting back, so...
Who's this commissioner?
Kathy Chapel.
Okay.
And she's the one that looked into this. Another thing that's being made a big deal of is why Ice Miller wasn't there. I think Ice Miller, as you heard, made a pretty big statement and pretty clear statement of what they thought and how it would proceed. Another thing to think about, too, is, for whatever financial deal that you go through, if you don't have all the paperwork, does that deal go through? I don't know about you folks, but it's never gone through for me if I didn't have every piece of paperwork involved that was asked for. Another thing to take in consideration, too, also on this deal, the NRP group is not the one that's gonna pay the price, should something happen. It's gonna be the citizens of Beech Grove is the ones that's gonna pay the price. Dan and myself did a lot of research. I've got quite a few contacts downtown. We hit them up. And you're going, and then you guys have all the documentation, the key documentation and everything else, on what Ice Miller had to say. So I think that's all the farther I need to go on that, on those situations. Mary, if you want some, I got your CDs, I can get them to you, or whatever else.
That'd be fine.
And stuff, so I put all the meetings on there pertaining to this deal, and I put probably 85%, when you say, Dan, of the stuff that we found on those CDs, to give a fair and equitable presentation of what was turned in. Now, when I do my research, it doesn't necessarily mean I agree with it. It's what comes out. I don't agree with paying taxes, but I do pay taxes. You know, it's what the law calls for. And by be given, given the facts and circumstances that we were given, and going downtown, Dan and myself did a couple times, and Dan did a lot of research on this, I did a lot of research, we had meetings with Brownfields and all that other stuff. This is what we came up with from the experts that overlooked these. So that's where we stand, that's all the farther I'm gonna go with that. Hopefully, if you want something else, talk to me on the side, or whatever. You have all the, you have most of the paperwork, the key presentations and everything else, the emails, attachments, and the whole nine yards, right there, if you want. One of the things that's getting confused is the for sale and given away. That's one of the big things that's getting confused here, too, also. And by no means do not think that we are insinuating that the previous RDCs did anything illegal in any fashion. Alls we are stating is, we can't find certain things. That's all we're stating. From that point on, that's all we're stating, as required by certain things, state statute and everything else. We turn the place upside down. Questions?
Thanks, Joe.
All right. Thank you. Oh, just in case people aren't here, I appreciate everybody that spoke up for me, in case we're not here at the end of the meeting. At least they did give their name and show up in person. I appreciate that. Thank you.
Public safety report. Chief?
Good evening, counsel, mayor.
Good evening, chief.
The Public Safety Committee was September 25th at approximately 9:00 in the morning. Four members present, myself, fire chief, and Debbie and Phyllis. The Fall Festival and the Holy Name Festival both occurred, and we, as far as the police and fire, there are no problems noted. The car show was canceled on September 29th, and it will be again on the 27th of October. There is a raffle that the car show is sponsoring, and this raffle is good for, it's going for three different charities. So if anybody sees a raffle ticket, quite a few of them were sold during the Fall Festival. So it's a good program that they're gonna have. The Main Street, as you see, it's gonna be completed hopefully by the end of October. The hours for Halloween, the police department are gonna support from 9:00 PM, from 5:00 PM to 9:00 PM, and we're 9:00 to 9:01.
9:00 to 5:00, they're different?
Yeah, it's, well, it's different kids that are shopping from 9:00 to 5:00. And we ask that the, you go out in a group, and if you're out after dark or affecting clothing in some kind of light, and to be with an adult, if you possibly can, or an older person. Two, we had a question about Fifth and Albany, and the police department sat there for more than two weeks, when one officer that was signed there for two hours in the afternoon, and he was only able to write one ticket. So what we find when we're there is what we deal with. We can't sit there every day of the week, and I understand that some people see other things, but we'll deal with what we can find, and the whole city is our problem. We had a question on Main Street about stop signs during, from Second up to Eighth, had a complaint that, or a suggestion that more stop signs be put there because of trouble seen crossing Main Street on the numbered streets. So I asked the mayor, and he said that maybe Councilman Bell would look into that, since that's his area, or maybe somebody else on the council. And the police department would never be opposed for the safety of putting up stop signs, but I think a study ought to be done.
Could you be more specific as to which streets, is it all the numbered streets through?
It was suggested all the numbered streets from Second to Eighth Street have...
There's a visibility issue crossing Main Street?
Yes.
Thank you.
That's what the complaint that I got.
You know, we have that, all the street signs have to be updated anyway next year? Is that something that...
I don't think that's stop signs. I think it's just the names of the streets. And I think that's it for what the committee had.
Questions for the chief?
Chief, I'll take a look at that, and go out with Brad, and see what maybe come up with.
Okay.
Thank you.
Jim Brooks is not here this evening. We'll move to financial report, and the clerk, please.
Counselors, our State Board of Accounts audit is complete, and we believe it will be released to the public soon. I have received a brief preliminary report that is not available for public consumption. When the audit is complete and the results are made public, I will, of course, report those findings to the council for review. We did not have any large bond payments due this month of September. After consultation with Jeff Peters, and in accordance with the budget, I have transferred the return on investment payment from the utility to the corporation, the amount was I reported last month that we had established a fund to track the court expenditure and receipts more accurately, and that once a year, we would transfer that money into the general fund. To remain compliant with state statute, we are receiving the fund balances monthly into the general fund. Once again this year, I have established an insurance committee. The committee members are Chris Duffer, Rodney Giffen with the Department of Public Works, Aaron Genetti with Fire Department, James Bond with the Police Department. We just had our first meeting this past Thursday. I have been working with Jeff Peters to complete the survey and application process for the tax anticipation warrant, and ordinance will be brought before the council for first reading at the November meeting. Please keep in mind, we will not know the interest rate or the loan amount till late December, which will be after the ordinance is approved. The process is the same every year. The bond bank determines the amount that is needed to borrow and interest rate. In September, the city conducted a public auction on surplus items at the Beech Grove Police Department. Mike Heimel, auctioneer, conducted the auction, and the proceeds were approximately $10,000. The city website continues to be updated daily and is a great resource of information for the citizens of Beech Grove. I would like to remind the counselors that each of you have a webpage on the website, and if you care to update your page, please just email me your information. And also a reminder to any community organizations, if you have any community events that you would like posted, please just email them to me at dan.mcmillan@beechgrove.com. Financial reports, city debt schedules, bank statements, and more are all available online at www.beechgrove.com. This entire report with the bank balances will be on the website tomorrow.
Questions for the clerk?
Thank you, Dan.
Mayor's liaison report, I don't think there's anyone here from the city of Indianapolis. We'll move to unfinished business carried over from previous meeting. General Ordinance Number 18, 2013, is up for second reading. And before I bring it up for second reading, I'll ask our financial consultant, Jeff Peters, to approach the microphone. Jeff, I have a simple question, and that is, the budget that we have presented, put together, is it fundable?
It is fundable.
Balanced?
It is balanced revenues to expenditures, except for the rainy day fund balance, which you have before you the option to appropriate it. Just because you appropriate it does not mean you will spend it, but it gives you the ability to not have to go back and publish it and additionally appropriate it throughout the year, but to make a determination sometime during the year that you may expend it if you have a need.
But the revenues that you see on a quarterly basis will fund this budget for 2014?
Yes.
Council members have questions for Jeff Peters?
I want to clarify, just because the amendments or whatever changes we made to publish budget, can we just take the budget as it was? Because, like he said, they don't have to spend, any department does not have to spend the amount that's appropriated in each category. And so if they come in under budget, all the better. So is that not an appropriate way to look at that?
By amendments...
Or I don't...
Well, that's, yeah, I don't feel that you made changes in any significant amount that I would even relook at it.
Okay.
I mean, our estimation error, just from the revenue projection going out 18 months, is probably greater than the changes you made the last time.
Okay. Okay, thanks, Jeff.
Any other questions for Jeff Peters? If not, I'll ask the clerk to read the resolution. Well, that's, yeah, I don't feel that you made changes in any significant amount that I would even relook at it.
Okay.
I mean, our estimation error, just from the revenue projection going out 18 months, is probably greater than the changes you made the last time.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Any other questions for Jeff Peters? If not, I'll ask the clerk to read resolution, or, excuse me, General Ordinance Number 18, 2013, the common council's budget.
Ordinance Number 18, be it ordained by the City of Beach Grove Common Council that for the expenses of Beach Grove Civil City for the year ending December 31st, 2014, the sums herein specified are hereby appropriated and ordered set apart out of the several funds herein named and for the purposes herein specified, subject to the laws governing the same. Such sums herein appropriated shall be held to include all expenditures authorized to be made during the year unless otherwise expressly stipulated and provided for by law. In addition, for the purposes of raising revenue to meet the necessary expenses of Beach Grove Civil City, the property tax levies and property tax rates, as herein specified, are included herein. Budget Form 4B, for all funds must be completed and submitted in the manner prescribed by the Department of Local Government Finance. This ordinance shall be in full force and effect from and after its passage and approval by the City of Beach Grove Common Council.
Questions or comments from council members? If not, I'll ask for a motion to approve General Ordinance Number 18, 2013, on second reading only.
I'll make said motion, sir.
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the same sign.
Aye.
General Ordinance Number 18, 2013, is up for third and final reading. This time, I will ask the clerk to read the ordinance in its entirety, please.
Ordinance Number 18, be it ordained by the City of Beach Grove Common Council that for the expenses of Beach Grove Civil City for the year ending December 31st, 2014, the sums herein specified are hereby appropriated and ordered set apart out of the several funds herein named and for the purposes herein specified, subject to the laws governing the same. Such sums herein appropriated shall be held to include all expenditures authorized to be made during the year unless otherwise expressly stipulated and provided for by law. In addition, for the purposes of raising revenue to meet the necessary expenses of Beach Grove Civil City, the property tax levies and property tax rates, as herein specified, are included herein. Budget Form 4B, for all funds must be completed and submitted in the manner prescribed by the Department of Local Government Finance. This ordinance shall be in full force and effect from and after its passage and approved by the City of Beach Grove Common Council.
Thank you, clerk. A motion to approve General Ordinance Number 18, 2013, on third and final reading.
I'll make said motion.
I'll second that.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the same sign.
Aye.
Please sign the form and register your vote, please. Jeff, thank you. I'll call you back up for Resolution Number 11.
Thank you.
I'll ask our librarian, Liz Shotley, if she has any comments or any corrections that need to be done to the budget for the library?
No, I just gave each of you a copy of the resolution that Dan will read. With the, the last one you might have gotten didn't have the adopted tax levy or the adopted tax rate numbers in there. I just wanted to make sure you had a current copy of it. So, nothing has changed with the budget amounts or anything. They just accidentally got left off last time.
I want to defer to the clerk for just a second.
Liz, for clarification purposes, it was advertised with the read in it.
Yes, yes.
So the general public will know that.
Yes, I should have said that.
Okay.
Thank you, Dan.
All right. Ordinance Number 19, be it ordained by the Beach Grove City Council that for the expenses of Beach Grove Public Library for the year ending December 31st, 2014, the sums herein specified are hereby appropriated and ordered set apart out of the several funds herein named and for the purposes herein specified, subject to the laws governing the same. Such sums herein appropriated shall be held to include all expenditures authorized to be made during the year unless otherwise expressly stipulated and provided for by law. In addition, for the purposes of raising revenue to meet the necessary expenses of Beach Grove Public Library, the property tax levies and property tax rates, as herein specified, are included herein. Budget Form 4B, for all funds must be completed and submitted in the manner prescribed by the Department of Local Government Finance. This ordinance shall be in full force and effect from and after its passage and approval by the Beach Grove City Council.
Thank you. Need a motion to approve General Ordinance Number 19, 2013, on second reading only. All second.
Dave.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the same sign. General Ordinance Number 19, 2013, is up for third and final reading. At this time, we will defer to the clerk to read it into the record, please.
Ordinance Number 19, be it ordained by the Beach Grove City Council that for the expenses of Beach Grove Public Library for the year ending December 31st, 2014, the sums herein specified are hereby appropriated and ordered set apart out of the several funds herein named and for the purposes herein specified, subject to the laws governing the same. Such sums herein appropriated shall be held to include all expenditures authorized to be made during the year unless otherwise expressly stipulated and provided for by law. In addition, for the purposes of raising revenue to meet the necessary expenses of Beach Grove Public Library, the property tax levies and property tax rates, as herein specified, are included herein. Budget Form 4B, for all funds must be completed and submitted in the manner prescribed by the Department of Local Government Finance. This ordinance shall be in full force and effect from and after its passage and approval by the Beach Grove City Council.
Need a motion to approve General Ordinance Number 19, 2013, on third and final reading.
I'll make said motion.
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the same sign. Please sign and register your vote, please.
Thank you.
Thank you, Liz.
You're welcome.
officials for 2014. Before I ask the clerk to introduce it into the record for second reading, I'll ask if there's any amendments to be brought forward.
Yes, I have an amendment. Last time I made this amendment, I withdrew it. I'm sorry, after more research, it, I found that this was an extra position, so I would like to eliminate it. I'd like to eliminate the part-time, full-time officer manager in the clerk treasurer's office. And that's my amendment.
There's amendment on the floor to eliminate the position of part-time, full-time manager in the clerk's office. I need a second, please.
It's a time for conversation.
I believe we threw some confusion about whether or not this is a new position or not. Comparing it to last year's budget, it was not on last year's budget, correct?
Last year, there was, this originally was a full-time position. It's now being done by two part-time positions. The only difference is, is just giving them a little bit more responsibility. But this is someone that's actually working in the clerk's office at the present time.
So these last two positions, part-time, full-time office manager and part-time clerk, that was prior, previously a one-person job.
That is correct. It went from one full-time person to two part-times, which saved the city money, correct?
Okay.
Dan, excuse me for my voice, but now, the dollar amount per hour from last year, it was listed that way when you brought it down to part-time?
No, but last year, I believe it was up to $12 an hour, and this way here, which neither one of these positions right now pay $12 an hour, which they could be, and all of this is, is, it can go up to that.
And is that, would, if there were an increase in the hourly, would that be at your discretion, or would that have to be brought?
No, that would be at my discretion. All people that work in the clerk's office, unlike other places in the city, serve at the clerk's pleasure.
And your budget?
Would support this.
The maximum amount?
Yes.
Counselor, the clerk has the statutory authority to set the salary for the persons in his or her office, provided the council approves it. So he has, he is within his jurisdiction to do that.
That's fine. I just wanted to clarify that.
There's a motion.
Can I help Anthony repeat that one more time? What is your motion?
I'm sorry, my, I'm sorry, I, poor choice of words. I said position when I, in fact, just mean the part-time office manager for up to 14 per hour. I wouldn't say eliminate the position in general.
Okay.
Because I think the position, as far as what Dan says, is it's already, falls under the bracket of up to $12 an hour.
Thank you, because I was confused.
Well, it didn't pass. No, it got removed. So, this is a motion?
So, Anthony, do we need your amendment?
I'm unclear. I think the motion that the counselor made last meeting was defeated, so we were going to go to second reading as it's stated in the ordinance as part-time, full-time officer manager, $14 per hour. So if that is the case, in my opinion, counsel, is that we would not need a motion or a amendment to do that. We can proceed as normal.
I would respectfully challenge that.
I don't know, I just.
Refresh my recollection, you had an amendment, and it wasn't heard or not? It wasn't heard, right?
It was not heard last, last month. I withdrew it.
He withdrew it? Yeah, I mean, I think, I think it's fair game if he withdrew it. I mean.
One was, one was.
It was not voted on, so it wasn't, it wasn't defeated.
One was defeated.
It was defeated, that's one thing, but if it wasn't voted on.
Okay.
Yeah, the one on the, the, the position in the clerk's office, he withdrew, so it's fair game.
Okay, so he has a motion on the floor, and I need a second.
I said, with this, it's actually given a raise, correct?
Well, along with that comes more responsibility that's not being done. Yeah. So if, in what you're saying, probably so.
Which is exactly what the court, what we gave the court clerk. She got more responsibility. She took on three more cities or towns, and give her a raise. And it's been called into question.
What's called into question with her is the fact that the budget would have to be increased. The budget would not have to be increased with this. That's what's called into question, because Andrew will still get his educational incentive pay, which in turn actually raised his budget 2,500 more, because that budget in his court was lowered by 2,500. And this, mine will support that, his will not.
But, not to fix the two, but I was under the impression that as an elected official, he's not eligible for that.
That's untrue. That's what Susie stated earlier, and she taught Austin at State Board of Accounts, and he said, "We are breaking state statute if we do not give him that $2,500."
But it clearly states in our ordinance that elected.
You need to amend that.
Are exempt from that.
So you need to amend that, or you're breaking state statute.
So you're going to fix that?
Right.
Okay, okay. I'm just, I'm just wanting. Gotcha, okay.
Counselor has an amendment on the table. Pursuant to that, I need a second.
I'll second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Can we have a voice?
Yeah, start to my right.
Yep. You're going to need to clarify what we're voting on right now.
What are we voting on now? I mean, I'm lost. Are we voting on Anthony's motion?
Anthony's motion.
Okay.
Yes.
Yes.
No.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. No.
I think it's five to two. I don't have that many fingers.
That's with me. Can we go through? Let me see, Dave, you was a yes?
Yes.
Yes?
Well, no.
Okay. Anthony was a yes?
Wait.
Is a yes, honey?
I thought.
Yeah. Yes, it's five.
Doesn't matter. Okay.
That's all good.
Pursuant to General Ordinance Number 20, counsel, is there any other amendments that need to be brought forward for consideration?
Yes, I have a, want to make a amendment on the educational incentive benefit. And basically, I would like to have it read. I would like to, the salary ordinance to read, associate degree, $500, bachelor's degree, $1,500, master's degree, $2,500. This would be a, I'm sorry. This would be a one-time bonus to an employee, paid upon completion of a degree. And it would alleviate elected officials. Period. They would not get back.
That includes the judge? Okay. And us, and the whole, okay. Well, isn't that what it says? That elected officials are not eligible?
Well, yeah, but I wanted to make sure that's.
Okay, so you're not, okay.
Clerk.
Okay, thank you.
Isn't that going against the state statute that Susie just?
Yeah.
Apparently so.
By putting the judge in there.
Yeah, by putting the judge in there, yes.
Any elected official, you cannot lower his salary the entire time he's elected. It cannot drop one penny.
That's fine, but.
Can I, can I just?
Go ahead, Anthony.
I was just going to, your amendment's on the floor, but I would just make the amendment if I would change that to take out elected officials are not eligible for the credit and leave everything else. and leave everything else.
Then we get... Sorry, just trying to lighten the moment.
For the, for the council's info, could you reread the, or restate the amendment, please?
Yes, we keep associate degree at 500, bachelor degree at 1,500, master degree at 2,500. This would be a one-time bonus to an employee paid upon completion of his degree. Eligibility requirements, all will apply, and employee must be employed with the city for a period of one year prior to applying for this credit. The college or university must be accredited, copies of transcripts and the degrees must be presented, and all documents must be verified.
Can I ask a question? Does the degree have to have anything to do with their job, or is it just a degree in whatever they want?
We need to talk about it.
So it's currently, it's whatever you, whatever you want. Currently, it's if you have a degree.
So it's like, a degree in dance, and we're gonna give them $2,500?
Right.
It's a master's degree.
But it has to be masters for 2,500, but yeah.
Do we have the amendment correctly written in the record?
I believe so.
There's amendment on the floor, I need a second, please.
You're removing elected officials...
Well, they said, can I remove this one?
I thought this was Craig.
The judge would still get his education pay.
Well, can I ask something? How would an elected official got that start with if it was just for employees?
Probably when it was first started, it was more than just employees. And elected officials probably could've got it. But once he got it, according to state statute is, the entire time of his elected...
So he's gonna get that every year?
Right.
That position? So why not just put it in the salary and take away the, just put it in the salary and take educational pay away from elected officials? I mean, he's just gonna get it anyway, what difference it make? But that way, you won't have this problem again.
And you can do that? Because he's the only elected official that receives it at present time.
So what would, what would the procedure be from here, then, to do that?
With a salary.
You're, you're, you're putting it in his salary, so you're not taking it away. It wouldn't be against the state statute.
While he's making now, anyway.
Ed, our counsel, you would have to withdraw your amendment and start over, please.
Can I ask a question of legal counsel? Just for his clarification, as long as he's in office, I think we, they're gonna misconstrue how we're doing this, and I think his needs to be stated in there, but put in there, no other elected official would receive educational incentive pay.
Yeah, and the reason behind that is because he needs to get CLE to be a lawyer and therefore to be a judge and then get in it.
Right, right. So I'm, I'm just saying, like, for the next mayor, next clerk treasurer, whoever, would be exempt from it, but whatever we've got out there right now, I think we need to honor his education pay.
Being within the law?
Yes, right.
Okay.
But let's say, for example, Judge Wells chose not to run the next time, you've got it in there, no elected officials would get that, so otherwise, it's gonna go on from judge to judge to judge forever.
I'd be for that.
And does his budget support that?
Well, we can make it support it. And, you know, we don't have enough room for him and the clerk both.
I gotcha, okay. And he can do whatever he wants with his money, once it's his.
Counselor, would you like to withdraw your amendment?
Sure. I'm confused anyway.
And we need a new amendment to whatever was going to be added.
As far as...
You've lost him.
Yeah.
You want me to go over with what he said? He said, an associate's degree, you'd get $500, bachelor, you'd get $1,500, a master's, you'd get $2,500. This would be a one-time amount, given after employment of one year of education, or one year of service to the city, and proving your education, degrees, and everything else. It would be a one-time payment. And all elected officials from here on out would be exempt from any education pay. Is that correct, Ed?
You've heard the, counsel, you've heard the amendment that's been introduced, I need a second.
Believe I second that.
Kathy, you second?
Yes, sir.
All those in favor of that signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the same sign.
May. John and Anthony, it passes five to two.
Any other amendments that need to be brought forward?
Yes.
Can I ask a question?
Mm-hmm.
Did you guys just take away all the... Since it's only a one-time benefit? Or they get their degree?
It's coming from the next.
Starting not, not...
This is for second reading only, and if they, and if they desire to do that, they'll take away education pay from every employee after the next year.
Except for the ones covered by contract.
That's correct. Which, you guys, you know, under contract, we can't take that.
But so, okay, I don't want to speak out there, but that means you're giving people a pay decrease. I'll just throw that out there.
Any other amendments that need to be brought forward?
But we're also giving an opportunity for all the city employees, a window to be able to get a raise, which they haven't in five years plus.
So you're taking, so you're taking away to do what?
Okay, the, the only one, the ones that getting it right now have gotten it, and it wasn't under an ordinance. It was given to the employees, because the fire department has it in their contract. No one else has it in their contract.
Police do.
Police do.
I've, I deferred it to counsel and...
The police have it in their contract, so...
Contract expires very soon.
Had it in our contract first, since we've had it.
Okay, well, whoever, if it's in the contract, you don't have to worry about it.
The contract, and you won't vote, because you're gonna vote to approve.
Do I vote?
You're the only board member who can vote to approve our contract, so...
We have a councilman who would like for the amendment to be rewritten, or re-read.
The educational incentive pay, you would get, an associate's would get paid $500, a bachelor's, $1,500, a master's, $2,500. This is a one-time pay with your employment with the city. You have to have served one year of service to the city to receive this benefit and apply for it, and make sure that all paperwork documenting your associate's, your basters, bachelors, your masters, is from a state-approved school, I guess would be the way to say that.
And that, that is...
Oh, and let me, there is an exemption, I'm sorry, for all elected officials are exempt from receiving the education pay, with the exception of the judge who is currently serving.
Or the law enforcement or fire department who are under contract?
Well, that doesn't state that in here, but on third reading...
Have to amend that.
Yeah, on third reading, you should probably put that in there.
All right.
So how many employees is this coming away from?
My guess is not very many. Half a dozen, maybe?
And, and may I just state...
Just your border works? I think it's...
For the record, in the, in the private world, in private business, your employer generally recognizes you upon completion of a degree. But they don't pay you extra every year, every year, every year. You earn your increases on merit, and I, like Mr. Bell said, if we take this money next year, we can give people a raise based upon...
How much money is it, Kathy?
What?
That you're taking away from people. How much money is it?
It's about fifty...
You can't say you can give people raises if you're taking money from them, if you don't know how much money you're taking from them total.
But...
How much, how much are we taking from them?
Sixty people at 2,500 dollars.
At my department, you will take...
You're not ta, we're not taking anything from your department.
I have civilian employees that have education, that have college.
They're not...
Taking that from them.
They're not under...
And so at my department, it's probably maybe $2,000? So you take, so say that's, and I'm not sure, so you're taking, you're gonna take Brad's education pay away. So that's 2,500, so there's 4,500. The fire department don't have any civilian employees. So say you're taking $6,000 away in the city.
I'm too.
Find that up amongst your employees.
Okay. I guess my concern, and ongoing, if we don't do anything, what if we lose three police officers, two police officers, three firefighters, three civilian employees? Because we're gonna run out of money at some point. And, and that is my ultimate fear. And you're right, Mike, that's not gonna cover anybody, but it, but...
But you made it look like...
You have to take some steps.
But you made it look like you don't care about those employees by taking the little bit that they do get, because they have not received a raise in six, seven years.
And I...
Now you're taking a little bit from them.
But it does, I don't...
And the cost of living has gone up, and we haven't even touched that.
I know, but...
Six, seven years.
I know.
The perception that you're giving your employees is that you don't care.
Can I ask you?
They're doing more for us.
As are all of the workers in the private industry as well. I mean, I must...
Private industry?
I know you're not, and I'm not...
APW is.
But, I mean, it, we're, we're in a no-win situation.
Kathy, to clarify that, there was an offer out there to give all employees a 3% increase in pay. The educational incentive pay would have been gone for everybody, and it would have amounted to $60,000 that they would have given up, and the city was going to, in turn, add about another 60,000 to 80,000 in there to give them all an increase. There was four people in the city that would not have benefited by this, and the union chose to vote against it. So the offer was there, but they would have had to give up the educational incentive.
We didn't have a vote on it. That's wrong. We didn't have a vote.
I didn't say you guys.
You did, you said the unions, the union did not have a vote.
The, did the fire department do this? How did they come up with the...
Because we're not gonna agree to anything that takes money away from one officer. And what he won't tell you is, that if you take my college pay away from me, and then give me a 3% raise, I only net .3%.
There was four people that would have actually lost money in the city.
Right, and we're not gonna agree to that. We're not gonna let you take money from our employees.
Okay.
It's a word game. You can say that you gave us a 3% raise, but it's not true. Like, I said, I would have netted .3%.
There was numerous employees that would have gotten a 3%.
But you also would have taken from some, right?
There are four people, yes.
That's not fair.
Well, that's...
Not fair.
Then they shouldn't complain about not getting a raise. They had the opportunity, and the raises probably would have happened after that, year after year, but the way this thing is so messed up, I don't see it happening.
Is there, we'll move on, General令数20. Is there any other amendments that need to be brought forward before we go to second reading?
I mean, counsel, you have to check and see if I can do it, but I would like to amend the education pay to exactly what it was, except for state, under elected officials are not eligible for this credit, except the judge. I mean, it's a different amendment, but...
I'm sorry, I am so lost. I'm, I'm, I'll be the first to admit, I'm so confused about all this. I, I don't want to take away from the police department. I don't want to take away from the civilians of the city either, from the, from the educational.
That's why I just stated the amendment exactly what it stated, it states on our paper, except for, under elected officials are not eligible for this credit, I put, add an exemption for the judge, which is, it takes care of the judge, and then it gives everybody their education incentive pay.
And then it should be, but, except for the judge until...
The new judge.
16 or...
Until the next...
Having, having already passed on the...
Next election, second reading. How can we get to...
No, what we have to do is, Anthony, if you could hold on to that until third reading, please?
We're on third.
No, we have not passed second reading yet.
I'm sorry.
We've just done the amendments. We'll bring it up for second reading.
Okay.
And then we go into third reading, then you can amend after the second reading.
All right.
If there's no other amendments to be brought forward, I will ask that the rules be waived to read General令数20, 2013, on second reading by title only. I need a motion.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the same sign.
Can I, can I say just one thing? You have last meeting, who amended the court's salary to get a little raise, and it's not in the budget? That's what I was pointing earlier with...
It's right there.
Yeah, but it will increase his budget because of the 2,500 being added in there.
Okay, let's go ahead and, there's a...
All the city employees.
We have waived the rules to read it by title only on second reading. Let's approve it on second reading, and then we'll go right to third reading, and we'll do amendments. So I'll ask the clerk to read General令数20, 2013, on second reading on title only.
Ordinance number 20, 2013, is a salary ordinance fixing the bi-weekly rate for appointed and elected officials and employees for the city of Beach Grove, Indiana, in year 2014, be it ordained by the common council for the city of Beach Grove, Indiana.
Thank you, clerk. Need a motion to approve General令数20, 2013, on second reading only.
I'm going to approve on second reading.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the same sign. General令数20, 2013, is up for third and final reading. This time, I will ask the council if there's any amendments to be brought forward for consideration.
I would bring up the amendment that I just stated a minute ago, which is, leave it, leave the education incentive pay exactly how it is, and add, elected officials are not eligible for this credit, with the exception of the judge, until a new judge is brought in. I guess that's it.
You said elected, meaning?
I liked that.
Elected.
There you go.
Motion's on the table, need a second?
If you get that written down.
You got it the way you like it?
Well, no, not for sure, because, go ahead. I mean, I've got it on recording, too, so...
Short-handed.
Yeah.
Okay, but then, that takes me back to the clerk of the court's salary. Are we standing with that increase that was amended last time, or not? Are we putting it back where it was? So she gets no increase, as does...
This is, this is separate right now, this is the education incentive benefit.
I know, but I'm just...
We're on that amendment for right now.
Okay, so there, there would be another amendment for that?
If, if you feel...
There is a amendment on the table by Counselor Davidson, and you need a second, please.
I'll second that amendment.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the same sign. Is there any other amendments that need to be brought forward before we hear General 令数20 on third and final reading?
I don't even know what this is. Amendment, a suggestion, a question. I thought when we went back to the city budget and we approved it, and the courts, or what a legal department, whatever it's called now, was in there, and was approved as it was originally, that does not reflect in any... that does not reflect an increase for that person, correct?
Well, the increase, what actually happened, the judge's budget actually went up, but by him being decreased by twenty-five hundred, it showed like, I don't know, I'm just gonna use the number, like a sixteen hundred dollar negative amount, and that's what he was gonna use for the pay raise. Well, now that twenty-five hundred dollars is back in there, so he's got a nine hundred dollar increase to his budget already. And then if he gave the increase to the court clerk, that would surpass what his budget is, and Jeff, correct me if I'm wrong, they are not allowed to raise the budget, and if that happened, we would refer back to last year's budget. Am I correct in stating that?
Um, you're not allowed to do it at this point in time. But if it is truly the desire to give this one individual a pay raise, and that pay raise would call for a higher budget than what has been approved, you have a couple options. One, you can do an additional appropriation next year to cover that amount. Or you can, um, send it back to the department head and the judge and say, okay, you got part of what you wanted. You figure out where it gets paid for out of the budget we've approved for you already.
Okay, thank you.
And we can do that this year.
Now.
On this, yes, now.
Yeah, your action as the fiscal body, you know, you decide on that pay. You've already decided on the budget amount. So.
It's up to him to figure out where he finds.
Up to he and/or the mayor.
Okay.
All right. Any other amendments that need to be brought forward? If not, I will, uh, ask for a motion to waive the rules to hear General Ordinance Number Twenty, Two Thousand Thirteen, on third and final reading by title only.
I'll make said motion.
As amended.
As amended.
As amended.
I'll second.
All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the same sign. General Ordinance Number Twenty, Two Thousand Thirteen is up for third and final reading. I'll ask the clerk to read the ordinance by title only for the record, please.
City of Beach Grove Salary Ordinance, Ordinance Number Twenty, Twenty. Ordinance Number Twenty, Two Thousand Thirteen is a salary ordinance fixing the bi-weekly rate for appointed and elected officials and employees for the city of Beach Grove, Indiana, in year 2014, be it ordained by the common council for the city of Beach Grove, Indiana. Section, oh, go ahead. That's.
Motion to approve General Ordinance Number Twenty, Two Thousand Thirteen, on third and final reading.
I'll make said motion.
I'll second.
All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, the same sign. Passes seven to nothing. General Ordinance Number Twenty-One, Two Thousand Thirteen, a motion, or, uh, ordinance for additional appropriation is up for second and third reading. At this time, I will ask the clerk to read the ordinance into the record on second reading, please.
Additional appropriation ordinance Number Twenty-One, where it has been determined that it is now necessary to appropriate more money than was appropriated in the annual budget, now therefore, section one, be it ordained by the Beach Grove City Council of Beach Grove Civil City, Marion County, that for the expenses of the taxing unit, the following additional sums of money are hereby appropriated, transferred, or reduced out of the funds named and for the purpose specified, subject to the laws governing the same. Local law enforcement, amount requested five thousand dollars, amount appropriated five thousand dollars. Total local law enforcement fund, five thousand dollars, amount appropriated five thousand.
Need a motion to approve General Ordinance Number Twenty-One, Two Thousand and Thirteen, on second reading only, please.
I'll make said motion.
Second.
All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, the same sign. General, our, General Ordinance Number Twenty-One, Two Thousand Thirteen is up for third and final reading. This time, I will ask the clerk to read the ordinance into the record for third reading, please.
Additional appropriation ordinance Number Twenty-One, where it has been determined that it is now necessary to appropriate more money than was appropriated in the annual budget, now therefore, section one, be it ordained by the Beach Grove City Council of Beach Grove Civil City, Marion County, that for the expenses of the taxing unit, the following additional sums of money are hereby appropriated, transferred, or reduced out of the funds named and for the purpose specified, subject to the laws governing the same. Other servicing charges for local law enforcement, five thousand dollars, amount appropriated, five thousand dollars. Total local law enforcement fund, five thousand dollars, amount appropriated, five thousand dollars.
Need a motion to approve General Ordinance Number Twenty-One on third reading, please. Second?
I'll second.
All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, the same sign. Please sign in the ordinance sheet. Resolution Number Ten, Two Thousand Thirteen is up for hearing this evening. This time, I will ask the clerk to read Resolution Ten into the record, please.
Resolution Number Ten, Twenty Thirteen is a resolution that addresses the State Board of Accounts' position with regard to the Affordable Care Act pursuant to penalties, and the position of the city of Beach Grove may take pursuant to this act. Whereas Congress has passed the Affordable Care Act, and whereas recently the U.S. Department of Health and Human Services announced that the date of implementation has been pushed back until 2015, and whereas the Affordable Care Act implementation has left several questions and concerns about fees, coverage, and penalties for noncompliance, and whereas this complicated law may hold elected officials, boards, and the fiscal officer personally liable to pay penalties for noncompliance. Therefore, be it ordained that the common council has questions concerning the implementation of the Affordable Care Act and the hardship it may cause to the city of Beach Grove. Therefore, be it further ordained that the common council desires that no elected official, administrator, board member, or fiscal officer be held personally liable for penalties and interest pursuant to this act. The city shall indemnify any such person in the event of any legal action or proceedings absent any criminal act. Therefore, be it further ordained that the common council may choose not to participate in the Affordable Care Act, and may instead choose to pay any penalty associated with noncompliance. Therefore, be it ordained that this resolution only applies to the fiscal responsibilities pursuant to the Affordable Care Act, and shall not have cause not to pay any other insurance premium presented to the city. Therefore, be it further ordained that this resolution shall go into effect sixty days after pass by the common council, signed by the council president, attested by the clerk treasurer, and signed by the mayor.
Thank you, Dan. The floor is open for comments.
I, I'm sorry. I would just like to comment at this, and I know a, a city council in Beach Grove don't really have any opinion, you know, or not, don't have any voting power on the Affordable Healthcare Act, but I can say that I'm a hundred percent against it, and I urge everyone to contact their congressman and senator to defund this. This is, it's costing tons and tons of jobs with my employer. Most of my, most of the employees that are either underneath me or beside me go, going down to part-time. And now it looks like the city could possibly, uh, submit to fines. So that's just my opinion on it, but.
This was brought, you should have an attachment to your sheet. That was brought to our attention in July, and I think the problem that the clerk and I have had with it is we just don't know.
Right.
You know?
Right.
The state auditor actually was the one that pushed us to do this resolution to release any of us of liability because of the unknowns.
Well, that, that was my question to Jeff and/or Craig. Is this something being adopted by all municipalities, or?
Should be. Should be.
It should.
Did you, did you get a notice on that?
Yeah, well, the auditor is the one that actually gave me this information.
So I think all municipalities are doing this.
Okay.
I motion, we accept Resolution Number Ten, Two Thousand Thirteen.
All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, the same sign. Please sign the, uh, sheet, please. Resolution Number Eleven, Two Thousand Thirteen is a resolution pursuant to, uh, decimal points for tax rates. And before I ask the clerk to read it into the record, I'll defer to our financial consultant for consideration. Jeff?
Uh, thank you, Mayor. This is a resolution that you have passed in, uh, all of your past budgets that I've been involved with. It is an administrative function. You have tonight established rates, levies, and appropriations for the city of Beach Grove for 2014. Before the DLGF gets your budget, it does have a, uh, short stop at the county level. They, under certain circumstances, have the ability to make changes, and if so, they will publish a chart of tax rates. If you adopted a rate of a dollar eleven, and they misplaced the decimal point and published eleven cents, you would be stuck with eleven cents, but for your ability to appeal, and that is what the resolution addresses for.
Comments, the council members? If not, I'll ask the clerk to, uh, read the resolution into the record, please.
Resolution Number Eleven, Two Thousand Thirteen is a resolution of objection, appealing the action of the tax adjustment boards or county auditor in accordance with IC six dash one dash, or dot one, dot seventeen dash fifteen. Whereas the city of Beach Grove, Marion County, Indiana, objects to the tax adjustment board or county auditor fixing any tax rate or levy different from the amounts fixed by the city of Beach Grove, Marion County. Therefore, be it resolved by the legislative body of the city of Beach Grove, Marion County, Indiana, that this statement be filed with the Department of Local Government Finance as provided in IC six dash one, dot one, dot seventeen, dash fifteen, in order to restore the tax rates and levies. Therefore, be it further resolved that this resolution supersedes any previous resolution regarding the same. Therefore, be it further resolved that this resolution shall go into effect immediately upon passage by the common council, signed by the council president, attested by the clerk treasurer, and signed by the mayor.
Questions or comments from board members? If not, I'll ask a motion to approve Resolution Number Eleven.
I'll make said motion.
I'll second it.
All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, the same sign. Resolution Number Twelve is, Two Thousand Thirteen is resolution brought forward concerning the redevelopment appointment. This time, I will defer to the council president.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, this resolution is, uh, made for another councilman, uh, tonight, and I'm gonna defer to, uh, Mr. Mobley, Councilman Mobley, into the record, please.
What now?
If you'd like for you to read it.
The resolution.
Oh, could you read it for me, Mike?
Certainly. I'll read it.
Go ahead, John.
Resolution Twelve, Two Thousand Thirteen is a resolution brought forward by a city council member concerning an appointment made by the city council, whose term ends December thirty-first, Two Thousand Thirteen. Whereas Indiana Code Thirty-Six, Dash Seven, Dash Fourteen sets the guidelines concerning the redevelopment commission. Whereas the common council of the city of Beach Grove can remove a commission member at any time according to Indiana Code Thirty-Six, Dash Seven, Dash Fourteen, Dash Nine. Whereas members of the city, oh, excuse me, Beach Grove Redevelopment Commission are representatives of the city and must be willing to work together to accomplish the goals of the commission. Now therefore, be it resolved that the common council of the city of Beach Grove, Indiana, desires the removal of Joe Griffin from the Beach Grove RDC effective October ninth, Two Thousand Thirteen. Be it further resolved that this is a, that this resolution goes into effect immediately after passage by the common council, signed by the council president, attested by the clerk treasurer, and signed by the mayor.
Floor is open for questions or comments before I give you options.
Well, first of all, I would like to speak. Um, I've known Joe a long time, worked with him in, in different offices. I think where some of the problem lies, he is very precise. He, he wants to be right there, and that's a, a good point. But, uh, in talking with other members of the board, uh, they're having difficulty working with him. Uh, and I believe that's why this, uh, has come up tonight. I fortunately wasn't, unfortunately, wasn't there at that meeting. I have listened to it. Joe brought it over. And I've heard exactly what Suzie talked about, too, on it. I've been to some of them that, uh, there's more argument than there is anything going on. Um, I'm, I'm just wanting to, uh, speak for that. Uh, this is not really, uh, a point against Mr. Griffin, but the way it's, they're not bringing it out, I believe.
Counsel, have any other comments? Counsel, you have.
Michael, do you have a chance to speak?
No. Counsel, you have, uh, the option to remove. You have the option not to remove, to retain. You have the option to table it. You have the option not to hear it, and you have the option to abstain. And I'll leave, I'll turn it back to the council president.
All right, uh, we have a discussion on the floor.
I make the motion, we table this. I think if we're gonna go after somebody, this is not the way to do it. They have board members that could, that could do this on their own. They don't have to bring it to us. If I have to vote on this, I'm gonna keep Joe in that position. He is a pain to have to sit and listen to when he comes up here. He's very precise. He always knows what he's talking about. Not always do I want to hear it, or when he chastised me for not being at a meeting. But we put him in a position to do a job. He's done it correctly. He's done it very well, mostly to the sugar rim of everybody that has to listen to him. Now, you can take that any way you want, Joe, but you call me out every meeting, so it's your turn. So that is my point. I motion, we table this.
I would second that because we, it's my understanding that we're gonna reappoint at the end of the year anyway. There's been points made, both sides. I was at the meeting along with other council people, and, and, um, it wasn't a pretty meeting, I'll tell you that. That's my opinion. But it wa, it wasn't a pretty meeting just from Joe's standpoint. I mean, there was others involved, so, um, I'd like to, I mean, I'd really, Joe is my insured, so, and by the way, Suzie, where there was not seven votes for Joe, because I abstained because he's an insured, and I thought that was a conflict of interest. And I will abstain tonight, too, so whichever way the vote goes, I'm going to abstain because he is an insured. So. So I would go along with Counselor Jennings and say, can we table it and let's look into whatever's going on a little further?
And I agree precisely with everything that John said. Everything that John said.
There is a motion on the floor to table.
I got Dave as second.
Second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the same sign.
Aye.
Aye.
The Resolution Number 12, 2013 is tabled, and I will go on the advice of council president. Next order of business is a transfer of funds within the Parks Department. I will defer to the clerk treasurer.
Counsel, Tom Hannan has requested moving $1,500 from contractual salary to Parks temporary salary. Your consideration this manner will be greatly appreciated.
Motion to approve the clerk's recommendation?
I make motion to approve.
I'll second that.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the same sign. The counselor has brought forward a question on how long the Resolution Number 12 will be tabled. I will defer to the, to the council president on his timeframe determination and when we should proceed.
Well, I believe, listening to Council Harrison, we only have a few months left. In November, I was going to open up the floor for nominations again for the possibility of a point vacancy or term ending, so I believe we'll just go like that. That's no problem.
A motion, or is it just, is that all we need to do? No, I'll defer to the council president, and he'll advise me. All right, that concludes.
We're going to do anything on this?
No. That concludes new business. We're ready for council comments, starting to my far right. Dave?
No, thank you.
John?
I have several things to read off here. Beach Grove's middle school girls cross-country team recently won the Marion County cross-country meet, the county meet. They are 58-0 this season, they've beat 58 other teams and won the Marion County. It's a great feat, it's a fantastic, fantastic job. Also, Friday night is Veterans Night at the Beach Grove High School football game. Veterans will be fed and have free admittance to the game. Dinner begins around 5:00, and the public is invited. So please, also, I usually have a booth there selling food, so if they don't get enough food there, they can come to my food booth, and all of our proceeds go to the administrative, to the athletic department. And go watch your girls volleyball team. They're good, they're fun to watch. And that's all I have this evening. Thank you for everybody that shows up. Joe, sorry for the harsh words, brother. That's all I got.
Dave?
Just thanks everybody for coming. That's all I got.
Anthony?
I would just like to, first of all, congratulate, I think he left, Brad Meriwether on his grant that he just got approved for the city, Safe Routes to School Grant. It's going to do a much-needed walkway and sidewalk, I know just in District 3, not just in District 3, but a much-needed sidewalk in District 3. The other thing is just congratulate everybody that was involved in the Fall Festival, the police, fire, DPW guys, everybody that, I mean, it was pretty clean on that Sunday. The promoters club did a fantastic job as well, and just, it was a great time, in my opinion. That's it.
First of all, thank you, everybody, for coming, and I am reading this on behalf of the entire city council. Retired firefighter Colin Rhines passed away last Saturday. He served 30 years on the Beach Grove Fire Department, retiring in 2001. The viewing was Wednesday, last Wednesday.
Oh, it's this Wednesday, Mary.
Oh, I'm so sorry. Oh, I thought this was Wednesday. Viewing is when, this Wednesday, two nights, at 4:08 PM at O'Reilly's Funeral Home. Funeral is this Thursday, 7:00 PM at the funeral home. Our prayers and sympathy go out to his wife, Donna, and their family. Sorry about that.
Kathy, you have any comments?
Just, just thank you, everyone, and in a bit of explanation on the salary ordinance, every single person on here I've spoken with, and this has not been taken lightly by any means, we're not trying to take money away from people, we're trying to find a way to make it better. And if you would like to look at a position that may have gotten an increase that you may not agree with, that person took that position, the clerk of the city court of Beach Grove. Responsibilities are now much different in that the city, and a good thing, took on responsibility for other cities. So she is that position of doing things that are helping generate income to the city. So I'm not saying that she deserves money any more than anyone else, or any, but I, it has to be taken into consideration, and that's how that decision was made for me, and I can't say for everyone, but I, I think that we did the best that we could do.
Thank you, Kathy, and I want to close, and Jeff, maybe you can help me. As the executive officer of the city, I have the right to veto or not sign the ordinances?
You do, and with correction of legal counsel. My understanding is you have the ability as the executive to veto. Because this is an appropriations or tax bill, you also have the ability to line item veto. And then, of course, the fiscal body has the ability to override your veto.
I will notify the council within 10 days by United States mail of my intent to conduct line item vetoes of the salary ordinance. So that will be my official notification. All right. Motion to adjourn.
And you said that we have the ability to overturn his vetoes? What is the timeframe on that?
At the next regularly scheduled meeting.
I'll defer to legal counsel.
You agree, Craig? Motion to adjourn.
I'll make said motion.
Second? Meeting is adjourned.